We're going to call the meeting to order of Borough Council. It's February 18th, 2025, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. McCarroll. Next, we have a few announcements. First one, we held an executive session on January 30th to discuss personnel matters. Next, we're going to announce a public hearing scheduled for February 19th, 2025, subdivision and land development and zoning amendment relative to building height and definitions. This can be found on the website at the address shown on the agenda. Next, we have the annual report presentation of the Civil Service Commission at the February 19, 2025 Borough Council Meeting. We have several vacancies on the Westchester Borough Boards and Commissions and Committees, so please spread the word. We can get some candidates. We have the Civil Service Commission as the alternate position. There is a Borough residency requirement. We have a Human Relations Commission, also a Borough residency requirement, and shall not hold any office in any political party. Planning Commission with a Borough residency requirement. Public Arts Commission, and finally, the Tree Commission. Next, we have common suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. We're missing Daryl.
I can report to Daryl as well.
Okay.
He is in another meeting, and he cleared it with Dana. To make sure he could attend another meeting.
Good to hear. Hearing no comments, we'll move on to number five, reports and presentations. There are none. Next, we will move on to old business. Through the minutes of the January 14th and the January 15th Borough Council meetings. Anyone have any comments? Changes? Okay, this is seven zero. Number seven, we'll move on to new business. And the first thing is approving a resolution authorizing the wayfinding sign agreement. Anyone want to speak to that? Ms. Reiner?
This is, you had all signed an agreement with the Brandywine Valley Tourism Group, I forgot, organization in, I think, October of 2023. This is the resolution that's required. This is not for our interior wayfinding signs. This is for updating the ones that Susan Hamley had presented on, which are replacing what she, I think, called the Miami Vice signs that are sprinkled throughout Chester County. So this is the required resolution to continue the process forward.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Check at seven zero. Move to consent. Moving on to the Administration, Communication, and Technology Committee.
Thank you. Item B1, or I guess new business item B1, discuss interview process for Boards, Commissioned Committees. This, just on background, came up in January and was discussed in committee. The thought process here was fairly simple at first, that we would adopt a singular process for making, having committees, I'm sorry, boards and commissions, committees make recommendations for filling vacancies, which then the Borough Council would hear the recommendations from either the committee chair or somebody that's an officer on that committee or commission or board. So initially, we all agreed that it seemed right to have either a best practice or standard process. However, this was kicked back to committee for some concerns around potential for, I don't know, just not having enough oversight or wanting a little bit more oversight, not necessarily that the Borough Council will be gatekeeper here, but have, you know, maintain a little bit more involvement in the interviewing process itself versus had, you know, extending it back to the Boards, Commissions, and Committees. So therefore, we discussed it in committee, at committee last week, and we kind of heard both sides. The main point here is that there's nothing really broken. We're not trying to fix anything that we feel needs to be addressed. In fact, by standardizing the process and not having council more involved in the process could actually create a problem. So the committee, it's, we decided to not have a recommendation for this item. And, you know, if we decide so, we can discuss it tomorrow night and vote. But we just felt that we discussed it, and we didn't really need to go anywhere with it. So that's where that is.
Any comments?
So Mr. Travis, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. There's no recommendation, and we're gonna, it's gonna be the status quo, the same process that we've been following?
You just maintain the current state.
Then, no, I have no comment.
Anyone else? Okay. Looks like, well, I don't know if that needs anything other than, you know, we're not doing anything. Okay.
So there are two lines here. Number one is a motion to approve a policy for the installation of commemorative street signs. That came out of number two, which is a motion to approve the installation of commemorative street sign for Prescott Alley to Gay Street titled Zookin Way. So Zookin Way is commemorative sign honoring stands. You can, but in looking at this option, which we recommend, we also ask that there be a policy in place for requirements and standards moving forward, not only about who we're commemorating, but also how the signs are going up. So that is what number one is about.
Okay, thank you. I think it was well, well-prepared. Thank you, Ramsey. I think you prepared that. I don't have any questions. I think it was pretty thorough and gives us a good guideline for doing this in the future and looking at this particular application. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just want to make a comment because I was the needs more information that Bernie referenced on the committee meeting. And it was because of this, that the question was, like, do we have a process for this? I don't want to just start giving signs willy-nilly to developers. You know, I mean, Zookin, he's done a lot for the community, but he's a developer. And it's like, well, what puts him beyond other developers, you know, that were doing this? And the fact that there's now, and there was no policy, and the fact that Ramsey whipped up a policy over the course of the past, I don't know, few weeks, month, or something, I was very happy to see when that came into play because, yeah, I don't want this to become something that we just kind of say, hey, let's, like, I want there to be reason behind it. So I was happy to see that that came about. So I'm all for it. So, thanks.
Any other comments?
Can I just note one thing? I will update the signage once we confirm with Merge. In the policy, there's an example. I don't expect that's what we want the signs to look like. So I'll work with Merge on getting something that mimics our new wayfinding signage and update the policy and send that out once I get a template.
Thank you. Any public comments or questions? Okay, for item one, looks like we have full consent. And also for item two, any comments or questions on the Zookin Way recommendation? Okay. Mr. Metric looks like he's weighed consent for that as well. Moving on to Public Works.
Good evening, Public Works. The motion to authorize solicitor to advertise a public hearing on March 19th, 2025, to amend Chapter 62, garbage, rubbish, and refuse. There's an attachment on the screen or we have it. The final draft, we realized this evening, Mr. Travis realized that there's a couple of things that have to be adjusted in the ordinance, correct, Mr. Travis?
Yeah, so if we can go to item number, in section three, item G. So there's a lot of times in terms of when we're putting out trash cans to be collected or garbage to be collected and put back. And they bounce around a little bit. They start at 6:00 AM in some cases, and they have to go back to their original place at 6:00 PM in some places. So I think we need to add a little consistency here because it's confusing. There's a couple of places where it says in summer months that trash should be set out no later than 6:00 AM, the day of collection. And then set back to disposal bags or need to be set out by 6:00 PM, the day of proceeding collection. So we need to fix some time changes. We need to make some time changes in here. I know this is a little confusing because this is in multiple places, too. So I think what we needed, what we need to do is, so with G, disposal bags and toders shall be set out no later than 7:00 AM, the day of collection. I think we just need to have that say 6:00 AM instead of having it at 7:00 AM and then during the summer months, set it out 6:00 AM, which is the very next line below. It's, nobody's going to understand this, and we're not going to be able to enforce it. So we just need to have some consistent times.
So right now, my understanding is for the morning, the consistent time all year round is 7:00 AM. So, and I can put a little flavor to this. I think, Don, you put this in here based off of possibly not just me, but this past summer, there was a little confusion. With my schedule, I wake up, I exercise, I, you know, let the dog out, feed the dog, and then somewhere between 6:00 and 6:30, I put the trash out. When it was super-duper hot, as we know it gets in the summertime, the guys were rolling past my place before I put the trash out. I don't know exactly when, but I don't know, between 6:00, 6:30, or maybe even a little sooner than that, so they could beat the heat. And so I was like, wait, my trash isn't getting collected because I would put it out afterwards, and we realized that it was because the guys were trying to beat the heat. So the conversation came up. Would it make sense to help the guys out that we adjust the time from 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM in the summertime so that they can beat the heat? And so that's kind of where this time change came about, from the 7:00 AM. I'm not opposed to that, you know? I can adjust myself for a couple of months. I think it's important for the people of the borough to weigh in, for those that are like me, that have their trash behind a fence and put it out of the fence before trash on trash day. I'm not sure I want to be doing that all year round in the cold, trying to get the trash out by 6:00 AM, if that's kind of what you were just saying here, to try to make it consistent. Because I don't, and I don't think the trash guys need it. I don't think they're going to be out that early either. So I'm not sure that that's the answer, but I do understand what you're saying with the cleanup. And I also think that it might be a good idea for those who are listening and may want to weigh in, to have a little bit of time to weigh in on that.
I am disturbed by that story. We can't be changing public policy because of one person's behavior.
It's not just me. It just happened to be I was affected and I'm vocal and I was, you know? I mean, I'm sure, that's the question. Are there other people out there that that happens to?
That's, this is a confusing policy when we have time changes, seasonal time changes. It doesn't make sense. Other people are not going to understand that. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, it needs to be consistent. If it's 6:00 AM and that's when the guys are coming, then that's the time and put it out the night before. It's not.
Well, then I'd say leave it at seven, the way it's been all this time, because changing it to six also gets confusing.
I guess I'd be interested in hearing from Mr. Edwards, like, what's going to work best for the team? And just pick a time, whether it's six or seven, or it could be 4:00 AM. But whatever time it is, let's just make it consistent so it's not confusing.
Probably six would be better than seven. But as long as it's consistent, that's really, we could work with probably either.
That's what we needed. So my recommendation would be to update the time throughout the ordinance to 6:00 AM.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
And then the, there were a couple of other typos in here, too, where there was some inconsistencies. When you share these things with your neighbor that's never seen it before, that's when these errors pop up and you're like, oh, okay. So empty toders, that's basically the next line, empty toders. So anywhere where it references six and seven should be changed through and throughout this whole ordinance update. But the next line, empty toders should be stored on the property in locations specified not later than 12:00 midnight of collection day. So that's after they're picked up. They should be moved back, but before midnight. And in some other places, it says 6:00 PM. So it's either midnight or 6:00 PM, and I would prefer it be midnight. That gives people that are working later time to come back and move their hands back. So those two changes on time, when to put cans out, when to bring them back. The next, this is a typo. Section 4B, any property which generates more than the equivalent of four 35-gallon toders. This is for private trash. We don't have 35-gallon toders for private trash. They're 96 gallons. And I think when we were writing this, we were looking at public disposal, which is 35 gallons. And somehow, this just got lifted and put into this section here because we're referring to toders for private trash. So it should say four 96-gallon toders per week for the disposal of garbage, rubbish, and refuse. So just for clarification, four 96-gallon toders is equivalent to two yards of waste. So if you have more, and this is already in the ordinance, and we've agreed to this, if you have more than four of these large commercial toders for private collection, then you need to get a minimum of a three-yard dumpster. And so that's in there. It's not specified as a three-yard minimum, but that needs to be in there, too. Any questions about that? So we've said, yep, we've said four. For some reason, we didn't, we had 35 gallons in here for the private collection. That is an error. Yes.
So do you say a three-yard dumpster or more than that?
This is going to be in a different section. Yes, please.
Okay, it currently reads four 35-gallon containers. We want to change that from 35 to 95, 50.
Which paragraph?
I think I made it more confusing. That's all. We want to change that number there, 35 to 96. Right, that's all.
So that's where we specify a minimum of three yards.
So we're going to add that.
And those were my only two confusing, hopefully not too confusing, changes to this ordinance. The rest of it, I think we're good, and we had a three-year recommendation.
Yeah, under B, we were actually referencing, you know, the public pickup from borough people because we're used to 35ers, where the commercial people are used to those big ones that say 96. So that's why we're giving them four 96ers. And if they, like, behind Brian's house, they have 11 of them or 12 of them. If you have more than four, you got to get a third, a three-yard dumpster to be able to meet the requirement, which most of the places do have room for them. So, so I guess with that one there, Mr. Metric, do we go back to, like, committee again? Or what do we do with this? I don't know what to do with it. We're changing language.
Procedurally, if everyone can agree to exactly what's been said tonight, you could put it on consent. We could discuss it tomorrow, or it could be pushed back to committee to get the draft right.
Well, first, is there any public comment or questions?
Did have one thing that I noticed today. I see that there's a section added for dumpsters at the end. And it's, and I'm not sure exactly what's meant by dumpsters, but it requires that they be covered at all times. But typically, on a construction project, you have a roll-off or a can, as some people call them, and they're not covered. I mean, that could be a 30-yard or a 40-yard dumpster. So it doesn't seem to me it's practical to have that covered.
The dumpsters that are used on residential properties typically have a lid that flaps down, and that is what we're crying. Construction dumpsters are a completely different animal and should not be used in these areas.
Correct. Thank you, Ms. McCarroll. She put a construction hat on. I like that. All right. So, Mr.?
So with this, we'll have the changes made and we'll vote on it tomorrow. We'll put it on the consent agenda, assuming that these changes are made, that we discussed.
As long as someone can list what the changes are so that we can go back to the record and make those accurate changes and everyone consents to it, yeah, that could happen.
So we have a public comment?
Yeah, hi. Lisa Kearns, 312 West Biddle Street. Just a quick question so I can explain it to my neighbors. I have some elderly neighbors, and they don't go out really early in the morning. And our trash gets picked up really early in the morning. So they very, you know, they have one small can, usually leave it the night before. That's not permissible?
Yes, that is in here. They can put it no earlier than 6:00 PM the night before.
6:00 PM the night before. Okay, cool. I thought they had to get it out by 6:00 AM, and that would be hard. Great, thank you for the clarification.
Coffee's not done by that time, Lisa. At my age. Oh, no. I put mine out the night before. That way there, I, that's why I don't have a dog anymore. It's too cold in the winter. All right, so, Mr.?
That looks like we can move on to number two.
Right, we agreed that we're going.
Yes.
Mr. Metric, you okay with the wording that Mr. Travis came up with?
My notes say, update the timeout to 6:00 AM in the morning for all days of the year. Update to midnight for the time that you have to bring it back in all days of the year. Update section 4B to say, instead of four times 35 gallons, say four times 96. And in the event that it does exceed that, that the person needs to get a three-cubic-yard dumpster.
Or greater. Yeah.
Very good, thank you. So, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you.
That moved on to consent. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to number two, motion to reject all bids for Gay Street closure. Remington Verwick and recommended we reject them all, and we're going to rebid that again because the prices were way too high, way too different.
Comments or questions? Any public comments, questions? Okay.
It's consent. Number three, motion to approve the sale of a decommissioned vehicle, signboards, lightboards, and salt grinder. That was a three-year recommendation, the sale of decommissioned vehicles. Would that go in pen bid, or how do we do that, Mr. Edwards? So everybody knows how to get them.
All of, all the items except for one would go onto municipal. The fire department wants to sell one of their vehicles differently.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Okay.
All right. Number four, motion to approve purchase of a litter truck body quote from EM Kutz Incorporated. We have to buy the truck body first, which is the chassis, and then Public Works will outfit it later. And that's around $57,000 just for the truck body. So that was a three-year recommendation.
And this was in the 25 budget, I assume?
It's in the 25 budget, yes.
Any comments, questions? Public comments, questions? Okay, move that to consent.
All right, number five, a motion to approve design and engineering phase one and two of services for Goose Creek Sewer. The conveyance capacity improvement that Panoni's been doing for us. That's the famous Maple Alley to move forward with the design and engineering phase. And that was a three-year.
Personal comments or questions? Public comments, questions? Okay, move that to consent.
Six, motion to approve the partnership services with Chester Ridley Crumb Creek Partnership for Goose Creek Cleanup, March 29th, 2025. And with the discussion there, I believe we were just supplying the Public Works people to pick up all the trash, and we weren't financially supporting anything financially. And that was a three-year.
Comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Okay, we'll move that to consent.
All right, number seven, motion to approve the curb installment of sidewalk improvements and renovation of the Civil War Monument area of the park to resemble the original intended layout at Marshall Square Park in accordance with the plans that were presented last week, which are up on the screen. They presented it to us last night, the other night, and it was a three-year recommendation. The way it looked originally is on the screen now, north, south, east, and west. Because there's trees in the way, they can only go, I believe, north and south, right? Yeah, north and south. And that was a three-year recommendation. East, I looked at you, east, west. So that was a three-year recommendation. It's a shame we couldn't do the whole thing because I think it would really look really, really good. But it's a start. So there's a three-year recommendation.
Council, comments, questions? Take a great project, look forward to seeing it. Thank you very much. We can.
And by the way, thank you very, no, no, you've already talked. I want to thank you very, no, teasing. Thank you very much for really taking good care of that Marshall Square Park for us. It's a nice thing for us.
It's our pleasure.
We had a meeting last night of our group, and with some discussion in our group, we decided to amend our proposal just slightly. You can see the red outline. What we want to do is we want to really recreate more of that east-west axis to have the Belgium blocks outline even where the paths used to be. I mean, it'll still just be turf, but Ann will explain it.
Actually, that's exactly right. But this evolved as we were looking at the original configuration of walls in that originally, we were just doing these individual circles. And it seemed an opportunity to connect these things was out there, made sense. And so we're looking to do whatever we can to more accurately reflect, you know, what it used to be back in the 20s and the 30s. So as Jeff said, we've reduced the perimeter around the circles, but we're showing grass around the monument and then perennials in the half, the circle beds. So it's a minor change, but we wanted you to be aware of our committee's latest update.
Thank you so much. It was, thanks for taking care of our park. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move that to consent.
Right. And the last one, approve the 2025 paving project that is up, that Mr. Edwards has given us. And he's going to focus quite a bit on alleys this year. So, and that was a three-year recommendation.
So if I could, Mr. Edwards, I do have a question on. So if I could, Mr. Edwards, I, I do have a question on, on the paving. So, uh, my question is, you know, this is basically, uh, milling repaving. So i- is it determined or is there any unit pricing for base repair? Or are you just assuming that everything's good to go?
Well, actually, there's, there's two. Do you have the second sheet that goes with this? Um, or is that, is that the only one that you said? Okay. Uh, to answer your question, yeah, like, like there's the unit prices, there's the cost estimate. And, and for like the main roads and the parking lot, it's, it's just the top coat of blacktop. And, um, that's factored into the cost estimate. For the alleys, it's two and a half inches of base material, so it's stronger. So it, so it holds up because that's basically a thin layer of blacktop out there. That's why they're so rough out there. So, so it's different. And that's accounted for there too. So.
Okay, great.
So there's a cost estimate that goes with the list.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Any public comments or questions?
Things are moving rather rapidly without Darryl. I'm just telling, I'm just saying, Darryl, just now, I, I miss Darryl. So that, that was a three O recommendation, uh, as we.
All right, we'll move that to consent. Mr. Metric, move on to Finance and Revenue Committee.
Yes, motion to certify the twenty-twenty-five qualifying volunteers. Qualifying volunteers must be certified by Borough Council before March first in order to receive the real estate tax credit for twenty-twenty-five. So that's our first responders that live in the borough.
How many do we have that are?
Barb, is that like, what, fourteen?
There's, uh, thirteen, uh, volunteers in the fire company that are entitled to this. And it, um, the total cost will be eleven thousand eighty dollars and ninety-two cents.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Okay.
Discuss the, uh, twenty-twenty-five budget modification for capital expenses. This was delayed until this meeting for further information.
Um, do you have the attachment, Bill? Do you have the attachment for this?
So we have, um, uh, the first budget modification for twenty-twenty-five. Um, the total of this is for capital expenditures and the amount of four million eight fifty-nine five twenty-nine. Um, this is a two-fold request, the first part being a request of two million two ninety-nine five twenty-nine. This is for twenty-twenty-four projects that were budgeted in the twenty-twenty-four budget, um, but were started and not completed. And as part of the budget process, any projects that, um, are budgeted and not completed need to be requested in the following year's budget. Um, I have an attachment. If we go to page two, the next page. So I did a reconciliation on the second page of all the projects that were included in the twenty-twenty-four capital budget. Um, as you can see, there were thirty-seven projects in the twenty-twenty-four budget for a total pro, uh, budget of four million one ninety-eight two seventy-one. And of those thirty-seven projects, twenty-two were completed. So that leaves us with fifteen projects that were either started, um, or in process and need to be allocated for in twenty-twenty-five. So that's what the first part of this request is. And then the second part of the request is to add two million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the wastewater capital expense fund. Um, this is to account for projects, um, in the twenty-twenty-five budget that we did not have in there. And we are going to be paying with that, um, offsetting with a grant and sewer tap-in fees. We have a grant that we did not budget of one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and tap-in fees of twenty-five thousand five seventy-five. And the, the remainder of that will all be, um, paid using year-end cash. Are there any questions?
The tap-in fees, Barb, what building are we getting that from?
So when we prepared, when we prepared the twenty-twenty-five budget, we had an assumption that the four big projects that were in place, that, um, we were going to recognize a part of that. So a part, a part of it each year, and our assumption was twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five. Not that it's set in stone, but it was just as, an assumption that, um, at least one of those projects would be completed.
One quick question. What does that do to our, our cash balance in terms of where we end of the year and then we allocate it for these capital projects? And I know it brings it down by those amounts, but.
The majority of these, um, are in the enterprise funds, which is in sewer and parking. Um, sewer, obviously, there's a lot of capital projects coming into that. So we have enough cash to pay for everything, but it's, we're going to rely heavily on cash management for twenty-twenty-five. Um, right now, there's about four million dollars in the sewer fund. So, um, that's going to put pressure on our department to go after uncollected sewer account receivables that we have out there, um, making sure that we're, you know, um, investing our, any unused cash in CDs and things in pligots. So i- it's going to make it run tight, but, um, I think it's a manageable ask within the finance department. Um, these are a lot of projects that need to get done. And I mean, it's part of the five-year, the capital plan that, uh, Mr. Mitchell has. So.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Any public comments or questions? Thank you, Barb.
All right, thank you.
Move that to consent.
Motion to approve fifty percent reduction of the Christmas parade invoice to the Greater Westchester Area Chamber of Commerce. That was a three zero recommendation.
Comments or questions?
Just little flavor. Um, long story short, uh, the Christmas parade was expecting a bill that, similar to what we had given them in twenty-twenty-three. We changed our fee structure around October twenty-twenty-four after the Christmas parade was mostly planned out and underway. Um, the way we changed our fee structure, we, we did not realize that we were giving this fifty percent discount to the Christmas parade. It, it was something that kind of happened after COVID as they were starting up the parade again. And so as part of the conversation, when we changed our fee structure, what we did specifically for the Christmas parade wasn't really part of the conversation. So we didn't realize at the time that it was an outlier with the way we, we treated that parade. So they got the bill and it was like three times as much as what they were expecting. It was like fifteen thousand versus five thousand, maybe a little higher. But, um, point being, it was a lot higher and it, and it was just because they had planned it out based off of that prior year negotiation. Um, and so this is for twenty-twenty-four saying, okay, we made this change in October, you were already planned out, you were based off of what we'd been doing for the past couple of years. So, um, we'll, we'll agree with that fifty percent for twenty-twenty-four. The conversation also extended to, we, we need to talk about what, what it's going to look like for twenty-twenty-five. We did change the fee structure, we changed the parking structure, we changed a couple of things. What do we want? The, i- is the Christmas parade, A, an outlier just in general? And if so, do we need to talk a little further about what we want twenty-twenty-five to look like? Because if the answer's no, then they're going to get a whatever, higher than fifteen thousand dollar bill this year, and they should be expecting it for their planning purposes. If the answer is yes, then we need to talk about this sooner versus later because next thing you know, you know, what, ten months until Christmas? So, yeah. Yeah.
So when will you need to, to know for planning purposes?
I think the first order of business is that reduction on the twenty-twenty-four bill, of course. We have that invoice sitting, um, on our books right now. Um, and then I'm happy to, to come back and have further discussion about, um, future parades, about the twenty-twenty-five parade. We do begin our fundraising and budget planning roughly around April. So it doesn't give us a lot of time to, you know, to have those discussions. I think it's also important to add to Nicole's kind of update and overview, which I appreciate, is that, um, I think council's intention with, uh, the parking revenue for, um, from the garages, it was also intended to help reduce the bill. But I think the parade is also a bit of an outlier there. It's on a Friday evening. So the revenue from parking this past year, not only did we take that parking fee from twenty dollars, which was in at least twenty-twenty-three, to ten dollars, we also reduced the amount that we received in that reduction by fifty percent. So the reduction on the bill this year in parking revenue was thirteen hundred dollars. So it didn't put much of a dent. But I did take a look at the invoices from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, and it was comparable. Um, we were just getting a hundred percent of the revenue, but it was only, I would say, a couple thousand dollars at that point that we were receiving. And I think that conversation, um, also around what time do we potentially start charging for that special event parking fee that Friday? I think it's a bit of a sticky situation because you have people coming in that work in the borough that are coming into work on a Friday, not necessarily coming to the Christmas parade. So, um, but that's something else to consider as well.
Good. Thank you.
So I, I, I'm.
Ms. McCann, let you go first.
I spoke at length, um, to a number of people involved in this. I worked really hard on getting some money put back into these events. Um, and I used the parking revenue to do that. The reason the Christmas parade is an outlier primarily in my mind is that we're not just talking about the Christmas parade. So we're talking about the lights, we're talking about decorate, certain parts of the decorations. We're talking about quite a bit more than the Christmas parade. This needs to be reorganized and looked at in a completely different way. And then we need to have council consider what we do want to fund and what we don't want to fund. The parade portion of this, we need to talk about the timing in the garages and whatnot. But that, it should be in line with all the other events that we are setting up so that there's consistency in this policy. This fifty percent kickback, although I'm a hundred percent for it this year, I never want to see this happening again. This is about setting a policy. When we start saying, oh, this is an outlier and that's an outlier, it's, that's what we've been doing. That's why we set this up. So we can't continue doing this. We need to look at this as it really is, which is an event and quite a few other things, and separate those out. And we, yeah, we should give this fifty percent right now, but we need to stop saying things are outliers and this is, this is acceptable.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. We didn't get that far in the conversation during the committee meeting. We really just focused on twenty-twenty-four, um, knowing that that conversation a hundred percent needs to happen. Um, because in twenty nineteen, they did pay sixteen thousand, whatever you paid, more than fifteen thousand.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So, so, um, a hundred percent agree with you there. And, and that's why also, yeah, this focus is just right now in twenty-twenty-four, but we do need to have the conversation for twenty-twenty-five, hun, for sure.
What committee's going to handle it?
Well, between parking and finance.
Yeah, I mean, we could always reevaluate what we need to do. I mean, we're going to have to if it's going to be a financial issue.
Right. And I might propose, just to put the, the thought in everybody's head for a moment, moment, for future discussion, that it could be structured as a sponsorship from the borough that would make the borough just as much of a sponsor as Westchester University is, as West Pharmaceutical is, as, you know, other businesses and partners that are part of the event overall. Um, with that marketing benefit, I don't know if that necessarily is of interest, but that may be a way to look at it and structure it so that there is, and then figure out how do you, you know, how do you add that to reducing the cost for the parade specifically? Because that is really our biggest cost. I know what you're saying, but that's really our biggest cost directed, directly through the borough in order to be able to put on the Christmas parade.
Should the special event fees come from, came, that discussion came out of which committee? Finance?
I believe it's did, but it was in coordination with your recommendation for parking, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, if you, those two committees could plan to get that on the agenda, you know, it sounds like April, May timeframe to coordinate with. The chamber.
I think there's also an opportunity to work with the bid here because we're not just talking about an event. We're talking about more than just that one parade time.
Mayor?
So, uh, I, I just had a couple of questions, not necessarily directed at you, Katie, but more the.
Okay, I'm here if there are any questions, so.
Um, it was for the council. It seemed to me last year, there was a lot of discussion around lowering fees across the board. Police fees were lowered, um, so the bills should have been lower, not higher. Um, because I assume they got the benefit of the lower police fees. Um, and also the parking event, you standardized for special events across the board. Is that a correct statement? You standardized special event parking across the board, and I think it went from twenty to ten dollars.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, but during that discussion, one of the reasons why you reevalu- reevaluated the fees was so that you weren't going back and giving special discounts to anyone. So all of the organizations that came to us would not be getting special exemptions. That was a lot of discussion, and that was your focal point, and that's what you repeatedly said. And so I understand that you did not consider the Christmas parade, but you're going right out the box, going back on what you said your intention was. And so I guess I'm very concerned about you're already starting a precedent and not doing what you expressly said you wanted to do. Um, I do, however, think that Katie's idea of having the borough sponsor it because this, this Christmas parade is a very big event. It generates a lot of people activity and goodwill that I think Westchester should sponsor it. But I also think Westchester should have more input into the Christmas parade because right now it's been all on your shoulders and the Greater West, Westchester Chamber of Commerce. So if we are going to actually reduce bills in half, which is not what you said you were going to do.
Well, hold on, mayor. All right, when you're, and then not.
Then I think that we need to, again, regroup, reevaluate, and decide how we're going to approach this particular event or any others that you come up with that you decide to do differently with.
Okay, so I want to answer your question because we're not going back on what we said. Um, so I want to make that clear. The only reason we're doing this is because we made the change in October and the Christmas parade was already very far underway. That is the only reason why I agreed to it because I understand the timeline. I understand that she had already been working off a budget from last year. And this, the discount, I did not realize we had given this fifty percent discount, like this, it was a, a huge change. So that is why I know we agreed to twenty-twenty-four saying, let's discuss twenty-twenty-five. And just your comments alone say you are open to talking about twenty-twenty-five because you're like, oh, yeah, maybe a sponsorship, something like that. So that's kind of, that was the decision that was made. It wasn't, we're going back on what we said, we're doing something different from what we agreed to. It was more that the ti- the timing of the decision that was made based off of how the, the parade had already been planned out and worked towards. It was pretty much already done based off of those old, those old numbers that we had been using, which was way different from even what we were giving everybody else, this fifty percent. So that is why we agreed, at least that's why I agreed, that we can do this for twenty-twenty-four with the idea that it would be a very different conversation for twenty-twenty-five. So.
I guess my question would be, is Katie, I know in previous years you've sat down with the police because I've been there, uh, and you've gotten the figure for that particular year. It, it, did that not happen?
Since my time back to the chamber since twenty-twenty-one, we've never received a quote on services for the parade for, from police and public works. We've only ever received the invoice.
Okay.
Yeah, we know.
So when you sat down with the police, you never got or requested. So when you sat down with the police, you never got or requested an invoice? Because usually they'll give you an estimate.
No, I've never, I've never received an estimate.
Other organizations.
Yeah.
So what was it last year? Not, not last year, the previous?
2023. In 2023, it was of about $5,000, maybe even just slightly under. And in 2022, it was roughly the same. And that was due to that 50% reduction. But we were also receiving 100% of the parking revenue. And I can, I, I'd have to look back at the 2022 invoice. I know that in 2023, it was a $20 fee for the parking garages. Yeah. So there was more revenue there as well that was assisting on that invoice.
That was a conscious conversation that happened during the fee change, the $20. That came up a couple of times. Do we do $20 for the Christmas parade or not 20? And, and we landed on $10 only to be consistent across.
Right. And I understood that that, that council's intention was for that revenue to help offset some costs for all special events. But I think it didn't have the intended impact, at least for us, on that invoice because it was reduced from 20 to 10. It was reduced by 50% in terms of what we were receiving. And we were also fighting with it being that Friday night event and when we started charging. So there were some outliers there as well.
I, I want to also add that the public works fees went up. The police went down, but other fees went up. The, the $20 versus $10, the $20 was actually sort of in error. It was advertised one way and, and then put in, it, it was very confused. And that is, I think, why we ended with 10, because that 20 maybe never was supposed to happen in the first place. The 50% is, isn't across the board thing. We set this with the intention of having consistency. The, the events that have happened since then have benefited everybody else. It's just the Christmas parade and it's partly because we're talking about a very different set of parameters with the parade and all the other things going on. This is not an equivalent event. It's, it's significantly more. So this is, this is sort of a bizarre conversation that we're having. We're not looking at apples to apples at all. Until we do that, we can't legitimately have this conversation.
Can I suggest that, I'm sorry, can, can I suggest that we move the item for the discussion for the 2024 fees to consent if we are all aligned with the 50% that we had previously committed to? And then we relitigate the Christmas parade in March or April? Because I feel like this.
I think that's a good idea.
Could go on and on.
Thank you.
Thank you. That to consent.
Item number four, motion to approve the following purchasing request. Panoni, $156,500 engineering consulting fee. Civic Plus, $12,283.74 network hosting. Eastern Salt, $17,982.60, that's for salt. And that was for the inventor. EM Coots, $57,201, that was the litter dump truck that we had discussed earlier. Oregon Tree Experts, $13,460, that was for pruning. Iron Rose K-9, $14,000, that's for the other K-9 that we're going to be receiving the training. Univar, $13,155.25 soda ash removal at, or purchase soda, or purchase for soda ash at Taylor Run. Usalco, $12,540 phosphorus removal and CDW, that's the network threat protection. All recommended 3-0.
Any comments or questions? Public comment or questions? Okay, moving on to public safety.
Okay. We had a motion to approve the dedication, ribbons and dedication for the crime victims center for Chester County. Something that we do every year, hanging the ribbons on the lampposts from New Street to Walnut Street, on Market and Walnut to New on Gay. This is approved 3-0.
Comments or questions? Public comments, questions? All right, move this to consent.
The next item, number two, motion to approve the resolution for the Westchester Borough Emergency Service Providers. Again, this is an annual event required for the Westchester Police Department, Fire Department, Good Fellowship, ambulance, and the services that they provide the borough.
Comments or questions?
And number three, a motion to approve the resolution to update the Westchester Borough Emergency Operations Plans. Again, this is an annual event, was approved 3-0. There were no changes from the previous plan.
Comments or questions? Public comments? Okay, we'll move this to consent.
Number four, motion to approve the following special event applications. Running Home 5K Event on 426. Born a Life Special Camp, 5K Run on 5-1. Pen Fusion 5K Run on 5-31. The Annual Turks Head Musical Festival. The Annual Chester County Restaurant Festival. The Annual Halloween Parade and Santa at the Square on 12-6. These are all approved 3-0.
Comments or questions? Public comments? Okay, let's move that to consent and move on to smart group.
All right. Motion to approve resolution for preliminary land development located at 210 to 214 West Washington Street. Eight single-family attached dwelling units, four on one side, four on the other. We were very pleased with, and so was the planning commission with the builders' ability to collaborate and work with all of the comments from the planning commission, from the residents, from Lisa, where they changed from last week to this week, the size of the pipe that they're going to use for the sewer. She was the, she was the one and they've, they've changed that in the plan. You saw that?
Did see that. I, you know, I still have a question. So the, the, the reason for the eight-inch pipe was to reduce the flow, right? We have flooding at Wa, at Washington and New frequently with heavy rains. So we changed it back to a 15-inch pipe, which is the standard. I also understand the eight-inch pipe, if I understand correctly, was also a cheaper version. But now we're back to a 15-inch pipe. So is the flow going to be the same or different? I understand we've got a different, we have less impervious ground. But are we doing the right thing or are we doing the cheaper thing? Are we doing the thing just to get this done?
The, the.
Yes, please.
So if you would, you wouldn't mind coming up, please?
My name is Scott Swazansky. I'm the civil engineer for the project. We did change, so we do not need the waiver. However, we, there will be a device installed. More than likely, it will be a eight-inch orifice metal plate will be bolted to where the pipe opening is so that the flow will be identical. It will still be held back the same as an eight-inch pipe would. So it'll be the same.
Okay. Thank you for that, that clarification.
Out of curiosity, how, what, what cost impact does that have on the project?
What's, what's that?
Going from the eight to the 15 with the, the flow restrictor on it. What, what does that do to the project? I mean, is that a $500 or is that $10,000?
It's not. Um, I, I would say it's probably more than several hundred dollar change, I would guess. Uh, I'm not sure exactly, but the initial thought was the eight-inch pipe directly to the inlet, without having any extra attachments is a much simpler construction project. But to meet the borough standards, it's, it's an easy switch design-wise. It's just a slightly more expensive pipe.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Public comments or questions?
Mr. McCoy, and I, I did, I did talk to Scott before the meeting. Since the last meeting, we receive, I've received three phone calls, one in person about the turning radius of the fire trucks in that area. The emergency services people said that they're concerned. Mr. Cherry said 10-foot was good enough with the, the fire truck. And I don't know what corner it's on, but the fire truck, they said they can't turn the corner properly. And I, I mentioned to Scott, maybe they could, when they go back to planning or whatever they're doing, to do a, a fire truck study on what the emergency services is, is questioning. That way there, they could satisfy the fire department because they're worried about turning the corner and the fire truck can't come around a corner. So it's my fault that I didn't ask what corner it was because there's four of them, right? So. Yeah. So anyway, I, I mentioned it to you.
Yeah, we'll be revising the plans and resubmitting the final plan.
Oh, there it is, right there. It's that one to our hand side.
And we'll, so the fire marshal, the fire marshal and chief and anyone else will have another opportunity to see. Yeah, that was, Jim Cherry was just suggesting shortening that radius to create more green space. But as you can see, we did go to the 20. If, if that's the corner they're speaking of, the patent bird's eye corner was what they originally requested to be 25, a 25-foot radius.
So they, they were questioning that. They were, they were concerned about the fire truck being able, I said, we've done fire truck radius turns, you know, when we're doing other things in the borough. And that's just a computer generated model.
Yes. Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll give them what they need to make sure we're doing something. Designing a system of intersection that they can maneuver around.
Thank you.
Just one other question, really. What's the square footage of each of these units? It's eight, right? There's eight units? Average, don't have to.
I forgot my calculation. My brain is not going to work on the spot.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I was going to give you the footprint. He's giving, he's giving you the whole.
Thank you.
Okay, we have consent to move this resolution for preliminary land development to the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve, deny, HARB applications. The first one was Nine North High Street, Nine Prime. It was a sign that the, and it was a sign for if you needed assistance with your entry to, to ring a bell, I believe. And there was a bell installation. And HARB approved it with some conditions and we were 3-0 to agree with HARB.
Comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Item B.
All right. B was a little bit trickier. I don't know. Bill, do you have the picture? So this is 100 West Market Street. It's the corner of Market and Church. And the individuals that were remodeling this building, they were asked to replace the door on the front of the building, but they did not go through the HARB process. And HARB is calling out that we should deny because, or make them change the door because it is not of HARB standards. When we talked last week, the, the question came up because in the information, okay, that's Nine Prime. But do you have the, the door? The, the information came up that the people that remodeled here, they were told to replace the door by Paul and that he approved it some, somewhere along the lines. And so we said, hey, we're not going to make a recommendation on this. Let's talk to Paul since he was back this week. And so I'm going to hand it over to Sean. Did you get a chance to talk to Paul?
I would recommend that council move this item to discussion tomorrow night so we can get all that information together for you. So he is looking into it.
Okay.
That sounds fair. Everyone agrees? We'll discuss it tomorrow.
And then motion to approve amendment and schedule a hearing for March 19th to Chapter 66, owner occupied rental permit requirements. And the, it's just a definition and basically it changes the definition that we have. Do you guys have the, the picture? Basically, it takes out the monetary portion of the definition of rental dwelling unit. So it says something along the lines of a rental dwelling unit is if people that don't own the place, live in the place, plus they pay some kind of fee. Well, there we go. We're crossing out the piece that says that they pay money. So it's just that people that live there are not the owner.
Comments or questions? Public comment, questions?
All right.
Tom, do we can move that to consent? Finally, any other business? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned at 7:37. Thank you.